Good evening, everyone. I would like to call to order the meeting of the Pender County Planning Board for August the 2nd of 2022. We will begin with a roll call. Mr. Jordan, present. Mr. Buchanan.
Present.
Mr. Bowden. Mr. Pitts.
Present.
Mr. Techie.
Present.
Mr. Grunfest.
Present.
Ms. Moska.
Present.
Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the Planning Board Meeting for the Pender County. We serve as an appointed board by the county commissioners to make recommendations and decisions concerning specific land use applications. We have one case tonight on the agenda to be heard. Before we begin, it is important for everyone to understand some facts related to this meeting. There is an imposed time limitation for all public hearing comments, which is limited to two minutes individually or five minutes if you're representing a group. Applicants and/or their representatives are excluded from any time limitation so that they may have adequate time to present their requests. The county attorney will keep time for each comment. Comments should be limited to only those issues concerning whether the rezoning, text amendment, or master plan application should be recommended favorably or unfavorably. Cases that are heard by this board are guided through the adopted comprehensive plan and the Unified Development Ordinance. The purpose of this hearing is to gather information so that we can make a decision that is fair to the applicant, the neighbors, and the community, and respects the procedures and standards established in the Unified Development Ordinance and the statutes of North Carolina. Certainly mutually agreed upon conditions may be imposed on master development plans and conditional rezonings to offset or mitigate any potential impacts a specific proposed use may have. Before we get started, are there any board members who stand to directly benefit financially from any decision that is made tonight?
No.
No.
No. If not, we will continue with the public hearing. Let us stand for a brief invocation. May we bow our heads? Lord and Savior Jesus Christ, we come before you, Seaman, with humbled hearts and open minds, asking that you will give us the wisdom so that we might make decisions that will be pleasing to current and future residents of Pender County. We ask this in your holy name. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
I would like to entertain a motion to adopt the agenda.
I make a motion to adopt the agenda.
A second.
All in favor of the adopted agenda?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, moving right along. Mr. Henry, are there any public comments?
There are no signups for public comment. We need to get into the adoption of minutes as well.
Can we adopt both sets of minutes at one time?
Yes.
Okay.
I will make a motion to adopt the minutes from February 1st, 2022, as well as from July 6th, 2022.
I will second that motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. Get ahead himself. All right. All right, let us move forward with the agenda. Mr. Henry?
Turn it over to Mr. Chris Hatcher to present the one and only case on the agenda for today.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Mr. Chairman, members of the board.
Tonight, I bring before you case Sublime 2022-191. It's a limited subdivision application. Travis Holder, applicant on behalf of Hampstead Investment Group, LLC, is requesting the approval of a limited subdivision on one tract totaling approximately two acres of land on Eden's Lane, located in the Topsail Township, approximately 400 feet from US Highway 17 in the PD Plan Development Zoning District. The subject property is a wooden tract that is approximately two acres and is currently The current zoning of the property is planned development with surrounding zonings of general business, residential performance, and planned development. Here we have the plat that has been submitted to staff for tonight's meeting. The minimum lot size shown on the plat is 21,016 square feet with three larger lots. It is important to note that the minimum lot size is to be approved by the planning board. For a limited subdivision on NCT/NC DOT Road, the lot or lots must have access to an NC DOT maintaining public street. Listed on the screen is the planned development use, table of uses for residential and commercial, along with the minimum setback requirements for a lot in a planned development zoning district. For the commercial use section of the table, the uses are only allowed to be approved with the submission and approval of a master development plan. And lastly, we have the Pender 2.0 Comprehensive Land Use Plan, which is low-density residential. The limited subdivision is consistent with the future land use plan, and with that, planning staff respectfully recommends approval of this limited subdivision on NC DOT Road.
Thank you.
So, Mr. Chairman, just a little bit of context here. This is, this is a little bit of a quirk in the ordinance with the planned development district. Planned development district, like Chris mentioned, does not set a minimum lot size. It gives that authority to the planning board. And so, staff, in a typical case in pretty much every other zoning district, this is a, really a one-day approval. We review the plat as long as it meets the standards of the ordinance and the proposed lots meet the standards of the zoning district that it's in. It's a stamp, approve, go record the plat, and have a nice day. But because this is in PD, we don't have, staff doesn't have the ability to do that. So that's why it's being presented to the board tonight. We've done this before. It's been years. I think most of you were probably not on the board last time we did this, but it was actually Mr. Bowden, before he was on the planning board, who was the applicant in that case. So, just a little bit of context for you.
Does anyone have questions for staff? No questions? Thank you.
Thank you.
And Mr. Howard Hooley is here representing the applicant tonight. He is the only sign up to speak as well.
Okay. Would you like to come forward?
I don't really need to speak unless you have a question. That was my plat. I made the survey. We did the survey, compared the plat, and the reason it's preliminary is because it's approved across. I'll sign it tomorrow. It's approved.
Will this be under sewer, next to the sewer, or is this going to be septic systems?
No, it's connected sewer.
Okay.
And I believe that's already been accomplished. They're receiving a package for that.
There's a first invoice in here.
Okay, that's where I was looking for. Oh, yeah, there it is, right below the plat. I mean, half acre lots, 100 feet wide?
Do we have any questions, discussions?
Make a motion to approve the, don't need to change it, it's good with you, the subdivision.
That's fine with me.
Make a motion to approve the subdivision as presented.
I'll second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? It's been approved, sir.
Thanks for coming to Birkhoff.
Thank you. Let your glasses back, once I can see.
Thank you, guys. Thanks, sir. All right.
Mr. Henry.
Next on the agenda, it's an honor to reintroduce Mr. Sam Shore, Pender County Planning alumni, to present a, this is, we've done this training before, so this will be familiar to some of you, but it's good to, you know, keep, keep these refreshers happening. It's also good for staff to keep hearing it too. So, we figured what better way to, you know, reward a former planning alumni than to bring him up and have him talk to us tonight, so. And now he's disappeared. We tried to do some forward thinking, planning with the PowerPoint, and I guess Sam might not have realized that we did that.
Well done. Mr. Chairman, members of the board, good to be back with you. I've worked with almost all of you, so good to see you again. For you who does not know me, I'm Sam Shore. I'm a planner with the Cape York Council of Governments. I was excited to be with Pender County for a couple of years and now to be helping out the entire region with their planning needs. Tonight, as Travis said, we'll be going over a pretty straightforward presentation in terms of the roles and responsibilities of a planning board and planning more generally. And, you know, if you have questions as I go, please don't hesitate to let me know. I believe some of you have seen a version of this presentation from a different member of the COG, but hopefully it'll be a good use of everybody's time and a good opportunity to have a conversation. So here we go. So let's start with why we're planning, right? As we all know, changes in population are occurring in our region. It's good to have a plan of attack in terms of how you would like to guide that growth that's occurring, address the needs of your natural resources, infrastructure, safety, ensuring balanced economic growth. Provides an opportunity to engage the public in the policymaking process, allows for guiding efficient public investment, establishing technical analysis of conditions, identifying needs, prioritizing actions. In some cases, you do need to have a comprehensive plan to qualify for certain funding. I know that in the past, Pender County has used certain adopted policies and recommended actions as part of their application for certain grants. And in some cases, you do need it to meet legal requirements. Certainly, that's the case here in North Carolina. You do need to have an adopted land use plan to enforce your zoning regulations. When the North Carolina Department of Transportation gets around to updating their transportation plan for the county, it'll also be a requirement to look at that land use plan as well. As I alluded to, Pender County is seeing and is expected to continue to see pretty significant growth. These are the North Carolina Office of State Budget and Management figures for 2020 and 2030 in terms of where they thought the county was in July of 2020, where they think the county's going to be in July of 2030. They're expecting an increase of just under 10,000 more residents, an increase of 15 or so percent, and a pretty good balance in terms of number of people who are born as residents of the county and people who are dying as residents of the county, which means, well, you got to be concerned relatively equally with maintaining your educational system and maintaining your healthcare system essentially, as well as a pretty good level of net migration into the county from elsewhere. You can see that there's not a whole lot of places for that growth to go. You look at other similarly situated counties, counties that are on the outskirts of our major metropolitan areas in the state, and you can see that we're seeing similar projections in terms of the growth that they're going to see as well over the course of the next Typical plan that Pender County has went through a public involvement process to adopt the Pender 2.0 Comprehensive Plan that you all refer to in your staff reports. It was a pretty robust public engagement process, saw a pretty high number of survey responses, a high number of public input meetings across the county, pretty in-depth existing conditions analysis that was supplemented by some grant funding from the State Department of Environmental Quality, in-depth future conditions and needs analysis, which then would relate into policies for the county and the future land use map that you all are familiar with. And then now that that plan is adopted, you're in that implementation phase where you're looking at those recommended actions to guide county action as well as, you know, as development comes forward, how much does it conform to that plan that the county adopted in terms of how it would like to see growth evolve over the planning horizon? Any questions about any of that? All right, let's move forward here to the legal context. Local governments are creatures of the state with no inherent powers. You look through the United States Constitution, and you won't find a reference to local government. It's up to the state governments to set up the framework in which local governments do their business. In home rule states, local governments have broad authority. Essentially, if the state hasn't told you, you can't do it, and it's not unconstitutional, you can do it. Whereas in Dillings rule states, local government has only those powers that have been explicitly given to them by the state. Here in North Carolina, we're not a home rule state. We're closer to a Dillings rule state. However, in the construction of many of the laws that have been set up, there is this idea that you have the powers expressly granted, those fairly implied, as well as those essential to the declared objectives. So you'll see that language in many statutes where, okay, it's not that we're giving you the authority to do anything that we don't say you can do, we don't say you can't do, but we're also going to give you broad authority to carry out the business that you need to carry out, to do those things that we've given you statutory authority to accomplish. Any questions about that?
What are the main-ish items that the state has expressly said you cannot do?
I'll get into that in a minute here. We'll get it. It's set up, they've set up a framework. So, one of those frameworks is coming up with the types of land use decisions that a local government can make and providing, you know, the steps that you have to undertake in order to review those. You have legislative decisions. Those are policy decisions that are reserved for your governing board to make final decision on. That'd be your amendments to your ordinances, a map amendment or a rezoning. Of course, also a local municipality annexing or adopting a budget, those are also legislative actions. You have advisory, which this board is pretty familiar with. It's the, when you're making a recommendation to your county commissioners regarding a text amendment to the UDO, zoning amendment, those would be opportunities for you to engage in an advisory decision. Administrative decisions are routine application of objective standards, typically handled by professional staff. Sometimes, certain decisions are delegated to appointed or elected boards. One, you know, it's certainly what your staff spends most of their day doing. If it's, someone comes in and they want to put up a sign, get a sign permit, that's an administrative decision. Subdivisions, you know, site plans, that's, that all would fall under administrative decisions. And then finally, this is not something that your board deals with directly, but it certainly impacts the work you do. These are formal actions where decision makers are applying a certain type of discretion, but there is also a high threshold of evidentiary rigor in terms of what is allowed to be admitted to the record. And your special use permits, your variances, your appeals are those types of decisions, usually a board of adjustment, but in the case of special use permits, the board of commissioners, and it's pretty common for your elected board to handle that type of quasi-judicial decision. Moving on, some more basics around statutory requirements. Zoning regulations shall be made in accordance with the comprehensive plan. That's what I had mentioned earlier. Starting in July of 2022, every community that wishes to adopt zoning ordinance or through a unified development ordinance, leverage the power to zone. What was that?
Oh, keep going. When you're done with that point, I want to.
Sure. You are required to have an adopted comprehensive plan, and it has to be reasonably maintained. Of course, the General Assembly in their wisdom has not defined what reasonably maintained means. According to the UNC School of Government, anywhere between five, seven, and 10 years, but it's not been litigated, so at this point, we don't have a clear understanding, but if your plan is less than 10 years old, you're probably okay. They shall be designed to promote the health, safety, and wealth, and general welfare according to 167, 160D 701. They shall be made with reasonable consideration of, among other things, the character of the district, peculiar suitability for particular uses, conserving the value of buildings, encouraging the most appropriate use of land, et cetera. Mr. Director.
Thank you, sir. That first bullet point, that is a new feature of 160D, however, Pender County and the other 19 Kamala counties have been subject to that requirement since 1970.
74?
Early, early 70. So the better, so the better part of five decades.
That's right.
We've been subject to that rule, and so, yeah, it's something new for us.
As you're going through this, I'm, my head's mistaking, is this also applied to municipalities, like cities or towns, as well as counties? Is this all consistent?
Yes. And so, this is part of 160D when it was created as a chapter of general statute. It used to be that general statute, chapter 16A, contained the municipal guidelines for zoning and subdivision and other development regulation powers, whereas counties, it was in 153A, and those being the two kind of general powers of counties and municipalities. But it was a long-term project of several kind of good government groups, as well as some more development-focused groups who wanted to see that language streamlined and brought into one central place. And so, 160D was created as a unified chapter where you could find all of that information. And every once in a while, you'll find something that has to do with an ETJ or something that is explicitly related to the powers of incorporated municipality, but generally, the entire section or the entire chapter applies equally to counties and to municipalities. This is where we get into that, the limiting of what it is that local governments may and may not do in the course of exercising their power. Regulations may address, among other things, the following public purpose, oh, I'm sorry, I had a slide, that slide. May address, among other things, adequate light and air, prevent the overcrowding of land, prevent undue concentration of population, lessen congestion of streets, secure safety, facilitate efficient and adequate provision of infrastructure. And so, these are just the general freight, policy framework that the state handed down in terms of, well, here's what we'd like to see you do with this power we're giving to you. This slide gets into the specifics of, well, how do you do that? Regulations under the zoning power may regulate and restrict the height, number of stories, and size of buildings and other structures, the percentage of lots that may be occupied, the size of yards, courts, and other open spaces, the density of population, and the location and use of building structures and land. And that covers, you know, when you get down into it, that you can do a lot with the combination and, you know, use of those powers. And that's the foundation of most of what we do. There is the subdivision grant of power, which is generally related to the installation of infrastructure, whether it be roads, stonewater, et cetera, in the course of regulating development. You've got your flood plain development regulation, which does provide for those types of regulations that allow you to be a part of the National Flood Insurance Program and exceeding the standards of the National Flood Insurance Program. But for the most part, regulation around development has to do with the zoning grant of power. If somebody comes in for a site plan or that kind of thing, this is where you're dealing with it. There are limitations, of course, as we alluded to earlier, and this is where you get into court cases around, you know, discriminating against this person or that person, and the courts in general assembly have found it's not appropriate to consider the applicant or occupant identity, the ownership of the property, the occupancy as it relates to, say, the income or identity of the occupant, or whether the project or use will be profitable. What the courts have said is really, you're looking at the use, you know, okay, a pool is a pool is a pool, right? You know, had some local governments who've been looking at potentially, you know, allowing pools as a standalone use, but then there's the concern, well, do we want to allow anyone to build a pool as a standalone use or just our residents? And, you know, you can't really regulate that. You know, who it is that is using the thing that is constructed, as long as it is the use that is proposed, is not something that the courts and the General Assembly have found that it's a local government interest to regulate. You know, for example, another good example is you might have it in your use table, that a burger joint, right? You can't say, well, you know, it's great if a locally owned burger joint comes in, but we're, you know, we're not going to allow you to build a Burger King, you know, for example. You know, certainly, if you, you can say burger joints, no drive-throughs, and that would certainly, because you're regulating the use in a certain way, tailor it in such a way that you might get a certain type of tenant, but you can't explicitly say this type of tenant good, that type of tenant bad. Is that accurate? Property rights, many limitations and preemption from North Carolina general statute, certainly one that the Planning Office deals with a lot. It has to do with vested rights and previously approved documents that then maybe there's been a change in the ordinance, but, you know, well, that plan is vested for this reason or another, and that prevents more recent changes in ordinance language to impact that development, you know, as well as generally the idea of takings and eminent domain. You know, as well as generally the idea of takings and eminent domain must. Administrative approvals, you're supposed to be looking at those ordinance standards. And if they're met, then the appropriate course of action is to approve that, that application. And, and that is something that has drifted somewhat over time. There used to be more discretion for certain types of permits. But under some of the consolidation of language that has occurred over the years, less and less discretion in talking to folks who have been at this a while is afforded to local governments in reviewing certain types of development.
There was, before I came to Pender County, I interned in Hanover County Planning when I was grad school. And while I was there, an article was published about the number of subdivisions that were submitted to Hanover County Planning and the number that were approved by Hanover County Planning. And it was like, 39 were submitted and 39 were approved. And the, I mean, I remember the comment section had like 500 comments on it. How can that be? How can that be? It's because they all were administrated submitted. They all, the planning staff has no discretion about whether or not, you know, to approve that case. And quite honestly, by the time, if a subdivision project gets to the planner, it's already nine tenths of the way there. And so at that point, if it's gets submitted and the planning staff finds an issue under every single standard of the ordinance, it's still 99 times out of 100 it's going to be worth it for the applicant to go back in and work with the planners to either just listen to exactly what the planners have said and fix everything or do whatever they need to do to make it a project that can be approved by the planners and get it through. That is, you know, the vast majority of what we're dealing with on a day-to-day basis is that.
That's right.
That kind of thing.
Some special considerations in statute, cell towers. It does, there's a few things related to cell towers. But one of the highlights is can't exclude or regulate based off of health concerns around the electromagnetic, electromagnetic frequencies. You can regulate the size, type, and lighting, et cetera, the design features of signs. But you can't regulate the content of signs. There was a recent First Amendment case on that issue. Essentially, you know, if it meets the way that you think a sign should look, well, then, then that's, that's what matters. Although they, they have modified that somewhat a little bit more recently. Somebody sued because, much like Pender County, this jurisdiction allowed, or did not allow for off-premise signs. If you were going to have a commercial sign, it had to be for the business on the property. And they said, well, it's my First Amendment, I can, I can put up whatever sign I want on my premises. But it was found that it was not a, undue infringement on the First Amendment to require that, that signs be for the business on the property rather than renting your sign front. So a little bit of trivia for you there. Manufactured housing cannot fully exclude, and you can't regulate based on their age or value. Single-family and duplex housing can't be regulated based on the design and can't specify a minimum house size. And residential uses overall are excluded from the general statute relating to moratoria on development. If you are seeking to have a moratorium on residential uses to develop or update your local ordinance. Some basics, turning now to specifically the planning board. A local government may establish a planning board if you want to enact zoning powers. If you don't have zoning in your jurisdiction, there's no requirement that you have a planning board. But if you want to have zoning, that's when you have to have a planning board. A minimum of three members, all meetings subject to statutory open meetings requirements. And then other details are left up to the discretion of local government. You know, I, I work with some communities that have a three-member board. I work with some communities that have a non-member board. Non-resident participation is sometimes an issue that may come up. If, say, you have a beach community where you have a part-time membership, or part-time residents, you might have individual slots on your planning board that are eligible only for those folks. Some planning boards, like Pender County's, has certain slots that are only available to individuals with, with certain professional backgrounds. And then terms of service, vacancies, and attendance are all issues that are left up to the discretion of local government. Statutory powers, I'm just going to run through these relatively quickly. Prepare, review, maintain, recommend to the governing board a comprehensive plan and other such plans deemed appropriate. Example of another such plan, I know recently you looked at an update to your Collector Street Plan, and that would certainly fall under this. Facilitate and coordinate citizen engagement and participation in the planning process. To develop and recommend policies, ordinances, developed, development regulations, administrative procedures, et cetera. Advise the governing board concerning the implementation of plans and amendments. Exercise any functions in the administration and enforcement of various means for carrying out plans that the governing board may direct. And this is one that is not relevant to Pender County, but it's in the statute. Some communities send special use permits to the planning board before they go to the decision-making body. That has been a long-held practice in many communities. However, this states, the state in updating the 160D said, you can continue to do that, but the whole point of a quasi judicial decision is it's court-like. What's said in that, that, you know, quote-unquote courtroom is what matters. And the evidence that's presented in that room is what matters for making a decision. And so you can continue to do that, but no part of the form or the recommendation of the planning board may be used as a basis for that quasi judicial decision that's ultimately made. And that's, that's something that's been a challenge for, for some of our communities who rely on their planning board to, say, for example, provide an opportunity to think through potential conditions of approval or things like that.
We used to function that way, many years ago. Pender County Planning Board also saw S U Ps, but it was a long time ago that that process changed. City of Wilmington just changed it like a year or two ago to be combined with 160D.
That's right.
The final.
It's just too easy to say, to refer back to, well, as they said in the planning board hearing, and suddenly you've used that as, as potentially what might be considered a basis for the final decision. And then, of course, the catch-all to perform any other related duties. So a lot of this stuff, when you've got a larger, when you've got a smaller, smaller unit of government, where you don't necessarily have a full-time individual who is doing the planning, that might be a reason why you see a planning board take on more of this. I certainly work with communities that only have a town administrator in their planning board. You know, goes out, they, they check roads, they sign off on plaits, et cetera. Here, you're lucky enough to have Travis and his staff to make sure that you're not the one signing something that gets recorded regarding whether a document does or does not meet the standards of the ordinance. But, but certainly. But certainly, certainly it is the case that in smaller jurisdictions, the specific appointed body, it is a much more expansive volunteer role in terms of what is expected. Then turning from statute to your U D O, in terms of advisory decisions, recommendations on text amendments, and recommendations on zoning map amendments, including conditional zoning. And then administrative, you've got the master development plan review in the P D, R M, and M H districts. I know there's been some opportunities to, to explore, explore that recently, in terms of recent court adjustments. Some more basics, when you're looking at ordinance and map amendments, proposed amendments to the U D O or zoning map must be submitted to the planning board for review and comment. That's a statutory requirement. The planning board, again, per statute, must provide a written recommendation addressing plan consistency, whether the proposed amendment is consistent with any adopted comprehensive plan and any other adopted applicable plans. And that's, that's where your staff report comes in. You've got your, your recommended language there, though, of course, you're always welcome to change that language and staff can get that updated and in written form prior to it going to be elected by. Board of commissioners are not bound by planning board recommendations. They're elected by the people and, well, per the North Carolina Constitution, the buck stops with them. They're the folks who have to make that decision.
In Pender County, it's rare that the commissioner don't go to the planning board and say.
That's correct.
That's been, since I've been here, four and a half years. And in the instances in which they do go in a different direction, it's just as often that they deny something the planning would vote for as the other.
Generally speaking, from my experience, the county's pretty good about following your adopted plan, too, and looking at it.
Certainly better than other places.
Some key considerations regarding text amendments. Is the amendment consistent with approved plans? Does the amendment balance the development needs of the community with protection of neighborhoods, property values, et cetera? Will the amendment affect existing development, potentially creating non-conformities? Say, for example, you changed the minimum lot size in a district and you expand it up. You say, well, we're seeing too dense of development in this area. We want to see a larger minimum lot size. Well, you can certainly create non-conformities, it's certainly legal to do that. But just understand that's what you're doing. You might impact some individual's ability to convey property or perhaps do what they intend to do with it. But certainly something to consider in the process of reviewing a potential amendment. How will the amendment affect future development? Will it appropriately allow or restrict development intensity? You know, there, you may want to consider, well, what are the unintended consequences? What are the knock-on effects of X, Y, or Z? Or maybe it's something that's straightforward and you can just prove it and field it back. Some key considerations around zoning map amendments, or rezonings as they're called more generally. Is it consistent with approved plans, in particular, the future land use map? Does it further identify goals or objectives, such as protecting community character or creating jobs? What's the character of the surrounding area? What are the impacts to neighbors, et cetera? And one thing to keep in mind with this, too, that I like to remind my boards is that, you know, certainly under, you know, folks have, have a certain level of property rights. So, and certainly this is something that the public sometimes needs a reminder of, too, is it's not necessarily a question of whether a piece of land develops, but how it develops and having a stake in how it's developed. And certainly that's something that's been a question, I know, in several development applications that have come up is, well, this is an opportunity to guide it and figure out, well, what are the pros and cons of keeping the current zoning or the current regulations versus what, what may, what they may be asking for instead. Should the change be applied to one or more specific properties or to all properties in a district? If it's the second one, maybe text amendment is appropriate as opposed to just rezoning those individual properties. And of course, you have to consider all permissible uses unless it's conditional rezoning. As, you know, somebody may come with you with fully intending to do a specific use that you feel okay with in a certain area. And that may be their full intent, and then they get their rezoning approved and their financing falls through, or somebody offers them a windfall to, to sell them the property and it may go to somebody else who may want to do something else with that. So just keep in mind, certainly applicants do, when you're dealing with a general use rezoning, come and say, well, this is what I'm doing with this property. And I, I don't doubt that that's exactly what they intend to do with the property. But it's also important for, for the boards to understand that once that change is approved, they can do anything that's allowed within that district. Turning now to conflicts of interest, this is something that got more explicit in 160D. Members of appointed boards who are reasonably likely to have a direct substantial and readily identifiable financial impact, you know, a familial business or other associational relationship, those are individuals who are supposed to identify themselves and recuse themselves from a hearing.
Such as a churchgoer, a parishioner?
So that's, that's one where I would, I would have to defer to the attorney in the specific case. You know, if you're just going to a church, it's, it's more on the line. Certainly if you're, say, a board of trustees member, that might be an issue. But, you know, say you're dealing with like a larger church that, you know, well, let's take the example of a small town where everybody goes to the same church. You know, obviously, you couldn't have folks serve on, on boards without, without folks from, from that church serving. And so that's, that's kind of a gray area if you're not serving in some capacity. Does that make sense?
Yeah, the, the statute expressly forbids if you're on the governing board. So that is, but it, it, there's, there's leeway on the other and it's, you know, mostly left up to the member's own determination.
Thank you, Chair. So the test is whether a reasonable person would question whether the decision is based on their merits or some alternative motive. You don't want to create the, the appearance. You know, there's, I think we're all aware that people don't always trust, trust our governments. And anything we can do to build a stronger foundation of trust is, is an action well-taken, in my opinion. Members must abstain from voting but may participate, though it's not advisable. That's, that's not the case in quasi judicial decisions. There, there you do have to be fully recused from the conversation as well as voting. And then there are also now standards that apply to staff who are engaged in administrative decisions. That was not the case prior to 160D. Open meetings. Public bodies are in existence to administer the legislative policymaking, quasi judicial administrative, and advisory functions of North Carolina. Since you all exist as a body to solely conduct to people's business, it's the policy of North Carolina that the hearings, deliberations, and other actions of these bodies be conducted openly. Each official meeting of the body shall be open to the public and any person is entitled to attend such a meeting. Meeting means, meeting, assembly, or gathering together at any time or place, including teleconference or other electronic conference of a majority of the members of the public body for the purpose of conducting hearings, participating in deliberations, or voting upon or otherwise transacting the public business within the jurisdiction of the public body. And, you know, often the question comes up, well, we have a text thread or a email thread that just, you know, goes out between us, hey, you remember the meetings tonight, et cetera. You know, that kind of thing, you're, you're okay. But, you know, you start going back and forth about agenda items, especially, you know, as the, that pace picks up, you know, you're getting closer and closer to something that is simultaneous communication. And that's where you run into trouble. Certainly, if you're going slower than that, you're still creating a public record. It's just, you're not necessarily breaking open meetings law if you're not having those kinds of fast-paced conversations. Does that make sense? Social meeting or other informal gathering doesn't constitute an open meeting. However, if you, if it's called for the purpose of evading the spirit of the law, you know, hey, let's, let's, let's adjourn this meeting and talk about this, you know, in fact, add these. You know, that's the kind of thing where, you know, that, that, that's, that's obviously evading the spirit. Any person may challenge in Superior Court the validity of any action taken by a public body in violation of open meetings law. The law does not create a right to be heard, only to speak, or only to attend, rather. There is no guaranteed right to speak unless guaranteed by local ordinance, policy, or guideline, with the exception of those items such as a rezoning or text amendment that includes a statutory requirement for a public hearing. That's, that's what I've got for you. What questions do you have?
Thank you. Are there any questions?
I have a few.
Sure.
They're different.
But the first question I have is regarding districts and municipalities, and there's a lot of conversation right now about taxation, bonds being brought for votes, you know, how do we pay for certain things? And there's other states, you know, that do things differently because of the home role. So, my question is, what types of districts can be created that are, you know, as a county, we try to have everything uniform, right? And so, when you tax, try to do it uniformly across the whole board, but yet there's areas that require more services or more investment that could require more of a unique, it's this only, this area. You also may have HOAs that go defunct or start having problems, and they want to turn over their services to a municipality. And how does that municipality look at them and say, "All right, you're now becoming an undue burden on the rest of the taxpayers. How do we create a district for you to tax you differently?" You have fire districts that have different types of taxation. What types of districts can be created from a county level or municipality level that can create different taxation rates within its own boundaries?
That's a really good question. It's really not something that I deal with a ton in my day-to-day work. I can say that, in the case of, say, you have an HOA with roads that need to be brought up to a certain...
Stormwater problems?
Yeah. So, roads are a little bit easier because there's explicit state authority for a special assessment for, say, a HOA community that wishes to turn over their roads, and they may voluntarily go for, agree to a special taxing assessment. It's one of those things where the rules around them are very specific.
If you have a stormwater permit that goes to the development, that permit is the, you know, the decorant, or the development has that permit, and they want to turn over that responsibility to another governing body, is there an ability for that governing body to then tax that area to say, "Okay, you turn over, we're going to accept this, and we're going to have to accept this permit, but yet we're going to tax you," whether it's a sunset clause on that taxation, or, that's what I'm curious about. I mean, you look at California, they have massive, you know, I know we're not California, but they do have ability to tax new development and say, "Okay, you're going to bring all these people in this whole new area, and you're going to put a school in, a fire department, all this sort of, you're getting taxed separately than the rest of the community." And you hear this conversation, you aren't here, "Why can't the developer do this?" Well, there's a state statute where they can't pay in backface. We get that. But if certain areas are going to grow faster than others, is it, is there an ability for the government to tax districts differently to accommodate the growth of the services so that, you know, we have an east-west concern here, you know, does the west bear the burden of what's happening on the east all the time? And I'm just curious to know if that's even a possibility.
Yeah, each individual type of infrastructure has its own, you know, I've not heard of communities having a special taxing district specifically for stormwater. I'd be happy to look into it and see if the statutes enable that. I know that several counties recently have, New Hanover's a great example, recently created a global stormwater fee. I'm not sure if that's for their unincorporated areas. I'm not sure if they have...
Right, and then everyone, the city of Wilmington pays for that tax because they're in the county, but they're only servicing those outside of that.
I don't know that folks in the city do pay that tax. I'd have to double-check that, because I believe the service is only being provided in the unincorporated area.
Correct.
And in that case, it would be similar to the fire districts, right?
Right. So, that's what I'm curious about, is what types of districts can be created for taxation purposes? What are the criteria for that?
Yeah, let me look into that. That's the type of thing where there are, state statute goes down many a rabbit hole for each individual type, and I've not had to be particularly privy to those. It's not something that's...
That was my curveball question. Another one I had is, like, you have these movements that are happening across the country and also within our own state that are really targeting zoning authority in general, you know, removing of single-family home zoning or complete, you know, movement of, you know, removing the zoning ability to control use, where they would like, prefer to tax the land rather than tax the improvement. Or some of it may just be because opportunistic to create, you know, for affordable housing or density or whatnot. That's a real movement. It's actually coming from the General Assembly, it's failed, I think because the bill's so poorly written, but that's real, that's out there. I think it's growing. What is the council government's position on why zoning is important? What is the counter to that argument?
Sure, absolutely. Well, what I'll say is, you know, we don't have an official position other than that we exist to serve our local governments, and our local governments see the value in having the authority to engage in the use of zoning powers to ensure that the types of development that those communities want to see is what is ultimately developed.
My last question is, we have a UDO that needs to be updated. For a variety of reasons, we've not been able to move forward in that. What would be the council government's recommendation for this body to recommend to the Board of Commissioners on how to move forward with an updated UDO?
Sure. Well, you know, again, we exist to serve our communities, and however we can be of assistance in whatever way the community wishes for us to help, we're happy to do so.
Thanks, Sam.
Absolutely.
I have a question, Sam. Now, you were referring to the majority of board members, hypothetically, board members getting together and discussing issues that is not in a public forum. Now, there's seven on our board. Now, is that, does, if it's three people that just happen to be talking or having, you know, where's it cut and dry, or is this a gray area? You referred to maybe two people talking at a place to eat or something like that. Is that a no-no?
Oh, certainly, you have every right in the world, as any other citizen of the county, to talk about issues, and you may have specialized knowledge because of your position. It's specifically when a majority, which is to say, the amount of people it would take to actually make a decision. If a majority of folks are together and you've just hammered it all out ahead of time, you know, that's what the statute is getting at, is preventing a majority of folks who have already conferred together from coming in and already having a plan of action. The idea is that when the public gets there, there should be an opportunity for folks who may come to that open meeting to see how the decision is made.
Right.
So, yeah, certainly, anyone who's not a majority gathering together would not constitute something akin to an open meeting.
So, and there's seven on our board? Correct. So, three or more people just, and we're good?
Three or less, yeah.
Excuse me, I'm sorry. Three or less people, and we're good. Not that that would happen, but, you know, like you say...
And ideally, however we can create openness transparency, great, but by the letter of the statute, correct, it's a majority that the statute is concerned about.
The context of how many people are actually appointed to the board matters, too. You know, we're fortunate enough to have a full seven-person board right now, but there's certainly been times where we had less than that, and so, if we get to five, for example, the majority's not four anymore, it's three. And so, that matters, too. But at the same point, the more we can be transparent, the better, always.
Do we have any more questions, Sam?
Yeah, so, along similar lines, what if an applicant of a rezoning or something more specific were to chat to an individual board member?
Yeah, that's perfectly acceptable for an applicant to say, "Hey," you know, say there was a planning board meeting, and it was tabled or continued, and an applicant notices that there's a member with some concerns and says, "Hey, I'd love an opportunity to sit down with you and talk you through what I'm trying to do here." That is a perfectly legitimate thing to do. Now, if this body was reviewing quasi-judicial applications, such as a special use permit, that would not be the case. That would be ex parte communication, and is frowned upon to say that.
So, in terms of ex parte communication, like, when a board is making administrative decisions, would it work in a similar way, relationships required, judicial?
No, just the same way that you, an individual staff member, can communicate with an applicant, you know, in whatever means you need to, and don't necessarily need to record the details of every conversation. The same would be true for a board considering an administrative decision. You're still, and that's a case where ultimately, you're looking at the adopted rules, and if those rules are met, you know, it doesn't really matter what conversations we have.
Anyone else? Thank you.
Thank you. Great to see you all. Thank you, Sam.
All right. Moving right along.
Um, yeah, the next meeting is, sorry, my agenda went away. The next meeting is scheduled for Wednesday, September 7th. However, as of right now, there's only one case that maybe will be on the agenda. And when I say maybe, it's a real maybe. There's some other things going on with that particular property that are kind of throwing the whole thing up in the air, so... There's a very, very realistic chance that you'll be getting an email from me in the next couple of weeks saying that we do not need to meet the Wednesday after Labor Day weekend, so... Thought the board might appreciate that one. Can we, Justin, what's on TRC for Thursday?
TRC, there is an application for a minor subdivision, nine lots, Eaton Lane, I'm not used to it.
Ashton Reddick.
Ashton Reddick, sorry.
Eaton Lane comes up a lot.
And the other project, which is kind of unique, we have a stormwater pond for Blake Farms going through TRC. Just to bond itself.
It's a long story. The other thing, you know, Sam mentioned it briefly in his presentation, but the policymaking aspect of what the planning board is for. If there are things that the board would like us to research, just let us know. We're more than happy to do that. Whether it's myself, or Justin, or Chris, or Greg, or Vanessa, or Daniel, or maybe even Sam, if Sam wants to help us out, you know, we're certainly more than happy to do that and present on any and everything that the board wants to hear about. You know, we identify things for staff to work on internally already. Greg is working on accessory felling units right now. Chris, if he could become less busy, is going to tackle our tree stuff. And I know Justin finds new and exciting ways to complain about our ordinance every day, so... But if there's anything else y'all want us to look at or want to learn more about, just tell us. We're more than happy to do that. It doesn't have to be in a meeting, or it could be in an email or a phone call. That's fine, too. And with, it's 8:10, I'll be quiet.
Okay. Actually, I wanted to say something. I wanted to thank staff for their unwavering dedication and how they make our job so easy. It's really, it's laid out, cut and dry, you know, I mean, there's, you know, a lot of different variables that we have to take into consideration as well, but they do make our job easy, and we appreciate that. And also, I'd like to thank the planning board members for, you know, giving up your time. It means a lot. It takes away from your families and so forth, and, you know, people probably don't appreciate it. You know, when they come here and they look at us, you know, they either hate us or they love us, but they don't realize the sacrifices that we all kind of go through. And I just wanted to say thank you. All right. I am open to...
I'd like to make a motion to adjourn. Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you all.
Thank you, Trey.
You need me to bring you a driver's forejog?
Uh, no, but I might give you a call alarm.
Okay, Jim, good.
Thank you.
Thanks, Trey.
I was in Pittsburgh, yeah. I was in Detroit, actually, going back to South Bend.
The backside was all too great.
Yeah, she was sick, and he got it, and I had to take it to the side, and I got it.